We will bring our regular city council meeting to order. It is 7:02, Monday, June 10th, 2013. Presenting the President, who may require special assistance, participate in this public meeting, please let us know and we'll try to accommodate you. Roll call.
Councilmember LaFever.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Crum.
Here.
Mayor Procham.
Here. Third agenda item is to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion that we've set on.
Is on.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any comments or discussion? Councilmember LaFever.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Crum.
Aye.
And I approve as well. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Agenda item number four is approved consent agenda. Approved minutes of the May 20th, 2013, public hearing in regular city council meeting. Set date of Monday, June 24th, 2013, for the regular city council meeting. Approved claims register and cash report. Billing permits were approved for the following: Billy Haas, 215 North Maple Ave. For offense, Brenda Hillereth, 115 West Ninth Street, offense. Corey Newbauer, 507 North Fourth Ave, adorment.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it, but I was concerned that I haven't had a chance to go through that claim register completely yet, being the time we got it and the size of this month. I'd like to take a little more time on that.
So what do you suggest?
Approve minus cash report, claim register cash report.
Can we wait until the 24th?
Is there any other option?
Your cash report was in your council packet. Right. Do you want to...did you have a chance to go with that?
This? Yes.
Well, no, it's the one with the bank information.
I attached here.
Do you need this part?
Yeah.
If we move that to the end of the agenda, can we spend some time at that time to get approved? That way we won't keep our creditors waiting for two more weeks.
I can do that.
Okay.
We've got a second.
So we got a motion and a second and...well, let's wait until the end. Let's do that. So we'll move agenda item number four to the end of the meeting. Agenda item number five is approved cigarette permits for Logan Mini Mart, Fuel &amp; Shine, Logan Country Stores AKM, Logan Super Foods. Marilyn, I'm assuming everything is supported?
I make a motion to approve the cigarette permits for the Logan Mini Mart, Fuel &amp; Shine, Logan Country Store, and Logan Super Foods.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussions or comments? Councilmember LaFever.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Crum.
Aye.
I approve as well. Motion passes. Agenda item number six, discuss and approve seeking bids for cleaning services at the Logan Community Center. I'm not for sure, I know Lois has...Lois Hall has cleaned the community center for quite some time. And I know that a few of us have had some discussions relative to maybe we should take it out for bid at this time. She's had it for quite some time. I don't think we ever took it out for bid over the last, I don't know how many years to do.
I've heard that she's been there since the building was moved.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Nothing bad been there.
So anyways, I did have a conversation with her and she would like to rebid as well if we would, you know, concede other bids or whatever.
I think we need to leave it open for other people to have a chance at it too, so...
Right. If we take it out for bid, anybody would bid on it. But she did say that she would have an interest in rebidding. We do have, it's kind of time sensitive because the contract is up June 30th. So we'd have to get this out fairly quickly, make a decision on the 24th if at all possible.
Give it in the paper.
Here. Can we get that in the next... What's that? Oh, Wednesday's now, sure. Next week then, right. And I think we could go, an option would be maybe we could go month to month potentially. But I know that in the contract, we require them to have liability insurance and some things, and so I don't know. That probably doesn't match up well with Lois currently having insurance and how her insurance contract goes. We'd have to talk with her about that.
And then they pose a limitation or hardship on anybody.
Right.
Wouldn't figure that, because they're not going to buy it on very much.
That's right.
So would we take, would we back me up a little bit? Would we put the deadline, basically Monday, the 24th?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if it's in the paper, next, what's this day later?
Well, I'm saying Monday, so if they got in Monday, just distributed that night and pulled them off and looked out. I mean, it'd be nice to review, get them to this as they come in. But I think there's a deadline unless somebody else is going to be short on time or allowing much time anyway. Yeah.
So drop off at City Hall on the 24th or...
Put it on.
Close of business on the 24th.
Now we need a motion and a second. We have some discussions. We need a motion on this. This is discuss and approve.
I'll make a motion that we put out for bid, the cleaning services here at the community center with a deadline of close of business on the 24th. And we put that out as soon as we can.
I'll second that.
Any further comments or discussions? Councilmember LaFever.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Crum.
Aye.
And I approve as well. Motion carries. Agenda item number seven is discuss and approve appointing a mayor or holding a special election. If the council appoints someone, citizens have 14 days to request a special election. Citizens must gather at least 10 signatures of eligible electors on the petition and submit to the city clerk. So full disclosure, I might have messed this up. I think that how I read, how we had to do this, I put out there our agenda four days in advance. And I think as we read it, or as I reread it, Skip and I talked a bit, I think it has to be published in the newspaper four days in advance, not just posting our agenda sooner than normal. We're getting a legal opinion on that as we speak, so hopefully the next day or two we will know that. If that is the case, then the 24th, we would publish in the paper. We could then put on the agenda for the 24th to make a decision to appoint or hold a special election. That happens to be the 40th day as well, too. And so we'd still be within the 40 days. If you want to make a motion contingent upon the attorney's recommendation on that, that's fine, too.
Just to continue the discussion since we're at least allowed to do that. I've been discussing with a couple people. I've had, one person approached me and I approached a couple other people. Some of those haven't panned out, but I still have one that I have some focus on for some interest, so that'll give me some time to work on that, too. I don't know if anybody else has had any opportunities or anyone approached them.
So we will table this until the 24th meeting? Is that what I'm understanding? I'm trying to make a motion on that. Let's just table that. I'll make a motion for that. We'll table that until the June 24th council meeting. That still gives us within the 40 days. Agenda item number eight, approve resolution 13-10. It's a resolution approving the tax compliance procedures designed to guide the city in ensuring ongoing compliance with the law, rules, regulations, and advice of the Internal Revenue Service relating to tax exempt obligations. We received information from Amy Bork, from Dorsey and Whitney. They work with us on our bonds, bonding. The tax compliance procedures are designed to guide the city in ensuring ongoing compliance with the law, rules, regulations, and advice of the Internal Revenue Service relating to tax exempt obligations. The IRS has posted guidance on its website stressing the importance of the adoption of the tax compliance procedures. We have determined that it is in the best interest of the city to adopt the tax compliance procedures. The attached tax compliance procedures include procedures to monitor the investment expenditure and use of the proceeds of tax exempt obligations and the use of properly...or property finance with the proceeds of the tax exempt obligations. We want to make sure we stay tax exempt. Maybe a way to say it. At the end, we have a motion and a second, and I will read it. I think what you're looking at there, Skip, is to document the voting.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 13-10, a resolution adopting and approving tax compliance procedures related to tax exempt bonds.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve resolution 13-10. I'll read it. This is a resolution adopting and approving tax compliance procedures related to tax exempt bonds. Whereas pursuant to the laws of the state of Iowa in Section 103 of the Internal Revenue Code, the city of Logan, Iowa, the city acting by and through the authority of the city council, has issued and likely will issue in the future tax exempt municipal bonds, notes, or other obligations to tax exempt bonds. Whereas the city deemed it necessary and desirable to adopt certain procedures or practices to be followed by the city in connection with the issuance of tax exempt bonds. And whereas proposed tax compliance procedures are attached here, too, as Exhibit A, the compliance procedures. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Logan, Iowa, as follows. Section one, the compliance procedures attached here, too, as Exhibit A, are hereby adopted and shall be dated as of the day you're of. Section two, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to periodically update compliance procedures in accordance with the Internal Revenue Code and supporting Internal Revenue Service rulings and regulations with advice from bond counsel. And section three, all resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict here within are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Pass, approve, June 10th, 2013. Any further comments or questions? Councilmember LaFever.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Crum.
Aye.
And I approve as well. Motion passes. The resolution passes. Agenda item number nine is to approve myself as an authorized signator with First National Bank of Logan. An interim mayor approach him until we decide what to do.
Make a motion on that? I make a motion to approve Mike Fowkes' authorized signature, the First National Bank of Logan.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Councilmember LaFever.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Crum.
Aye.
Agenda item number 10, approve resolution 13-11, a resolution to authorize transfer of funds for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
I'll make a resolution on 13-11, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from fiscal year 2012, 2013.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second on resolution 13-11. It's a resolution to authorize transfer of funds for fiscal year 2012, 2013. Created, resolved by the council of the city of Logan, Iowa. Section one, that the city clerk is hereby authorized to transfer $36,172 from the local option fund to the debt service fund to pay on the $400,000 loan at the aquatic center. Section two, that the city clerk is hereby authorized to transfer $9,888 of emergency fund to the general fund. And section three, that the city clerk is hereby authorized to transfer $50,000 from the general fund to the debt service fund, the Wood Foundation's payment towards that bond. Pass, approve, this 10th day of June, 2013. Any further comments or questions? Councilmember LaFever.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Crum.
Aye.
And I approve as well. Motion passes. Agenda item number 11 is approve vacation holdover for deputy clerk. So Marilyn has five days left to be used by the end of this month of the fiscal year, end of year. And then starting July 1st of next year, as it starts over, she'll get another 10 days of vacation. I'll do five, and I see there are...
Oh, okay. If we hold over any time, we have to use it by June 30th.
Oh, the carryover.
Right.
Right, the carryover.
So...
So you were granted five.
This is the carry.
And I carried two weeks. And that was... Right, it was approved in December to hold to...yeah, I've used one.
This would be an exception to the carry.
Right. Go past June 30th and then...
On just the carry.
I'll make a motion to approve the holdover for deputy clerk.
I'll second it.
All right. Got a motion and a second to allow Marilyn to extend her carryover, which was granted in December for 10 days carryover. She has used five, there's five left. So we'll continue to let her extend that carryover. Any questions or comments? Councilmember LaFever.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Crum.
Aye.
And I approve as well, too. Agenda item 12 is discuss and approve employee raises. What we're looking for here tonight, Amelia, is for us to decide on the pool. So we're looking at a pool, obviously, what it is that we want the pool to be. So we want a 3%, 2.5, 3.5, what we want the pool to be. Once we decide and approve the pool, then what you have in front of you there is how, based on the evaluations, how then that pool would be distributed. And you can see there, based on the percentages, we've forecasted what the dollars would be on the right hand side. So if we approve the pool tonight, and then on the 24th, we've had resolutions and on the 24th on the agenda to go ahead and pass the actual raises on the city employees with the actual pool, the percentage of what the pool would be. We do have a five-year history here on the bottom right-hand side, so 2008, 3% pool, 2009, 2% pool, 10, 11, and 12 has been 3% pool. So four out of the five years, we've had 3% pool.
Mike, I think there's too many things that are unsettled yet. We've got Vicki, we've got to take care of that. I'm not ready to vote on any raises. I don't know about anybody else, but that's the way I feel. Marilyn and Vicki, we need to settle that situation.
Well, my thought on that is, is we can't penalize all the city employees for that particular reason. I think that the city employees have gone above and beyond through this year, and I think they deserve merit increase. I don't disagree with you, Dave, we need to solve the other issue. I do agree with that. But I think in us determining what a merit pool increase would be, and then in looking at all the evaluations and putting that all together over the next two weeks, and then putting it back on the agenda, each individual specific person, you know, I feel that would be more appropriate and more fair. And I would just come out and say that I'm in favor of, again, a 3% merit pool.
I'm with you, Mike. I agree that they should have a 3%. And I think we should get this over with and then move on to Vicki and Marilyn's problem.
I don't know that they're mutually exclusive. I think they're all tied, the issues are all tied together. I think the situation that we have with Marilyn and the hours that I see her working and putting in, and the constraints we're under with her time, and also Vicki being in kind of limbo with her status, are not exclusive to what we're doing here with that. I, when just speaking about the pool, you know, I talk to people in Logan, and there's a wide range of people that are struggling in these times financially and economically. And granted, this is a, you know, nearing a cost of living increase. And we've been fairly aggressive, as the history shows, in seeing that. But even looking at that money, I've looked at all the things we've spent money on this year, and it's been substantial. And I think we've tried to show and have an effort to give the city employees at every turn what will help them be efficient and productive and, you know, make their daily jobs as good as possible. Now, that doesn't speak to take-home pay and things like that, but I think, you know, we've got to continue to watch, watch that money. And I don't know, I haven't decided on a number myself of that range of that pool.
Again, I don't disagree that we have to resolve the Vicki Schroder, Ms. Schroders' situation. What I don't think is right, though, is to hold everybody's raises up because of that. Well, I think what we're trying to do here is set what the increase would be tonight so that we can get it on the agenda for the 24th and get the proper resolutions in place. How I interpreted what you said was, we don't want to do anything tonight.
But I don't think that prevents us from doing anything before the normal time that these raises would go in place. The 24th is still going to come, and we can still take all action necessary at that time, unless we choose to do. Any action we take at any point in time, we can go back and make it retroactive. I mean, we had a lot of options at our table. This does not preclude us from doing what we want to do. And I think there's, you know, I want to give us further consideration. I don't know, I haven't seen, as well, we've talked about some of the reporting features of the way the current structure is in the city, but I haven't seen the reviews that Scott did for his guys and Elmer did for his guys. So, you know, those would be the ones that I'd like to see as well. I know the number, and I don't know what it's made up of, I don't know what the high points are, what the low points are, you know, the things that, you know, they've done a great job. That should be in there. I'd like to see that.
I didn't, I stand those.
Those were sent out a couple weeks ago. All councilmembers.
Which one? What reviews were sent out?
RC and...RC and...
Because I, yeah, I only remember seeing two of them.
Right.
So we don't get to see the rest of them?
No. All you got to do is go into City Hall and they're in the...they're in there.
I guess I would like to see the rest of them before I decide on this.
Any other comments or questions?
Has all the reviews been turned in?
The reviews that have been turned in, Scott did the reviews on Danny and on RC. The police committee did reviews, as well as Nick on Elmer. And Dennis, myself, and Nick did one on Marilyn that we've used to date.
Don't we have a couple in there for Randy, too?
Yeah, Randy, yeah. Randy's over. I'm sorry.
My mouse showed Randy.
Yeah, Randy actually did a review on Marilyn and on Elmer. So unless we missed something, I don't think we have any reviews yet for D. Is that correct?
How many people did the reviews on Elmer?
Randy, Dennis, myself, and you.
Four. It says two here. And it says two on this other sheet. It says two on this other sheet.
Okay. Well, it's four. Four people did the reviews on it.
So then it's an average score, correct?
We'll look at that.
Okay.
Randy's helping us with this as we reported in the last, in the last meeting, so we're getting this information, and he's really dissecting this great sheet, which we're going to get, so... Any other comments or questions? Any motions of any sort? All right, we'll move on to agenda item 13. We'll put agenda item 12, discuss and approve employee raises, on the June 24th. Agenda item number 13, Dr. Lee Heath to discuss her seven-day notice to remove check-ins off of her property.
What do you want me to write here? I'm not sure I need that. Do I need that?
End state your name.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'm Lee Heath. I'm at 524 West Fourth Street, and thank you Mayor Fauch and the city council for allowing me to speak. me to speak. I'll be brief, this should take me less than 10 minutes, but, you know, I want to say first, I grew up in Logan, Iowa, so I'm not here to be destructive. I would like to see us move on and literally get out of the wonder of this chicken ship and get on with the business of making Logan a better place to live. Now, I moved back here, and then back up. I live on, my property is eight and a half acres of land, of combined land, most of which is totally undevelopable. I have deer, coyote, badger, opossum, you know, even the occasional bobcat. I have a flock of wild turkeys on my property. But on this coming Wednesday, I'm going to be cited for having a flock of, a small flock of chickens penned up, attached to my garden, which cannot grow, it's all very private in the back. Now, I moved back to Iowa because of two things. One is, I do believe, and I think people, if you're looking around, should believe, that we are at risk of an economic collapse. And personally, I'm worried about feeding my family. So, I'm growing a garden, I have a few chickens, I can, I just do the things that our grandparents did to be prepared for bad times. And I think we should be more worried about that for ourselves than worried about me having a few chickens. But the other reason I moved back is because I think that I appreciate the values of Logan, Iowa, that I grew up with, which were self-reliance, honesty, common sense, and Christian charity. And I would like to see those applied to the issue of chickens. Now, I go around the country speaking publicly, and I get, actually, believe I'm paid for this, to speak about medical issues and the issues of individual liberty. And I have to tell you, after these public speeches, there's usually these private kind of little group discussions, and I bring up the issue of Logan, Iowa, and my chickens, and what's going on. And it's unbelievable. People from San Diego, and Madison, Wisconsin, and St. Louis, and Omaha, Nebraska, they laugh at us. They say, "Are you kidding me? In the heartland of rural agriculture, chickens are legal, but they're legal in San Diego, and Madison, and St. Louis, and Omaha?" You know, my son lives within stone's throw of the Woodman Tower, and chickens are legal in Omaha. It's just not a problem. I work in Lake City at a hospital, they recently legalized chickens, and guess what happened? Nothing happened. All it did, nobody, we didn't have an outcropping of chicken cubs, that didn't happen. What happened is that people with unusual properties like mine on the periphery of town suddenly were not criminals. That's the problem we have right now, is when you write an ordinance, you have to be willing to enforce it with force against your fellow man, and I'm really willing to do this with chickens, you know? And honestly, I have to say, this is more than about chickens. Anybody in the room who thinks this is just about chickens, this is really about liberty. Because, you know, I don't think the Constitution grants any city council the right to determine what a pet is. You know, essentially, what we're saying here is that you guys have the authority, and I appreciate the jobs that you do, but I don't want to give you the power to determine what a pet is, that you can say, "A horse is a pet, but a chicken is not." That a big, snarling attack dog is a pet, but this little 4-H girl's baby guinea is not a pet, you know? If you have that power, then you have the power to tell us what color house we have to have, how many cars we can have in front of our house, how many toys could be in the front yard, what kind of flags we can raise. I mean, it sounds absurd, but someday, maybe all you guys will be Iowa State fans, and you won't let any Hawkeye flags be in flow. I mean, if you give this power about defining a pet, that's exactly in the purview of the same powers. So, I really think we need to really look at this. Now, the other thing is a financial one. I don't want these good taxpayers to spend a dime of their money for you guys to prosecute me, you know? I think this is a ridiculous waste of tax dollars. And, you know, and I don't think you need another lawsuit, I don't think we need to be in a pissing contest over this. I honestly think this is what we ought to do. This is what I, my proposal to you tonight is. I sent you a model chicken, or a model animal ordinance proposal, because, you know, our poor Chief of Police, I don't think he wants to be the Chicken County Police or have an animal ordinance that's unenforceable. This ordinance that we have is unenforceable. It's not just about chickens, it's about, Elmer's not going to go into people's houses to make sure you have the right kind of snake, you know? I mean, it's just unenforceable. So, but I can understand that you need time to sort out a new animal ordinance. What I would propose to do is pass tonight, pass a resolution that says, "We're going to put a moratorium on all chicken citations and all chicken prosecutions until we've had time to really revamp the animal ordinance." To me, that's a common sense approach to this. It'll save the city money, it'll save the taxpayer money, and I think it's the right way to go. And, you know, on a personal note, I have to say finally, you know, I try to be a good citizen. I keep my property neat, I've paid taxes here for, you know, 15 years before I moved back. I, you know, I keep my head down and work hard. I kind of resent the fact that you can take the tax dollars of my fellow citizens and prosecute me with it, and I have to go and stay up all night rotting somebody's fever to make the money to buy a lawyer to defend me against my own city. I just don't think that's the way we want to live. And I'm a productive citizen. You know, if I weren't fourth-generation Logan and married to my grandfather's farm and this property, I'd be gone tomorrow. Is this really what we want to do, drive productive citizens out? We should be worried about getting good businesses into Logan, getting productive citizens to want to live here. But I don't, you know, I think there's a real issue here when this is the way we deal with things. And I think it's just a snowball effect. I think we could stop the snowball effect tonight, and all just kind of agree to, "Let's look at this a little bit longer." So, I propose the moratorium, and I would hope you'd really consider that. Thank you very much. Oh, I see this really could get, because I was going to say one more thing. I've lost a lot of weight, and I could get into jail stripes, and I have looked pretty good. And my good friend here, Mike Phillips, has said in solidarity of being a child in the 60s, he'd say a nude protest with me. Now...
Thank you. Any discussion with that councilman at all? Go to Agenda Item 14 then, discuss and approve Johnson's request for chickens.
I don't know how much discussion can be made on this anymore, Mike, but I'm for giving this young lady her chickens, her pets. So, I'll make a motion to pass her having the chickens.
I think with all the information we've gotten from the Johnsons, from Savannah, from Samantha, I think this thing's went on way too long anyway, and I guess, I feel bad and disheartened that I didn't do anything earlier to try to rectify the situation. So, I guess without being said, I'd second the motion.
You can.
Public discussion.
What's that?
As for public discussion at the end.
Yeah, which will be irrelevant after the vote.
Well, I too would, I am all for, again, wording this out in our community. I, yeah, I couldn't agree with you more that this has gone on way long enough. And I feel that, you know, we need to come together as a community and really resolve this. I don't know from the motion that you passed, you know, what that means. I think we need to think through how many, what kind, what we're going to do, that sort of thing. I agree with Dr. Heed, we don't want our Chief of Police trying to enforce these types of things that's very difficult to enforce, but today is in the ordinance and the code that we have to enforce that. So, I think we need to sit down and clear our heads together as far as what is it we're willing to approve or pass. I also would like to, I have talked with a couple of our constituents that are neighbors of the Johnsons, and I maybe heard Samantha wrong the other night, but, you know, she said she had 100% support, I believe is what she said, and that is not accurate. There are, there is not 100% support by the neighbors and the constituents that I've talked to. So, I think, though, if we could sit down and draft or craft something that makes sense for our community, you know, I'm willing to do that, to try to sit down and come to Do you have any, anything else?
Yeah, I've thought this. I've thought this over quite a bit, and I'm like Mike, I think we should sit down and talk this over, but just letting them have chickens is out of the question, because we're still giving Elmer more rules, more laws to follow with just letting them have chickens and not having any sort of guidelines, what they can have, what they can't have, and how they can have them. And so, we're still giving more laws that he, you know, going to have trouble to force. So, till we get something worked out, I'd still say they shouldn't have any chickens
Until we do sit down and do this, I think any charges against either the Johnsons or
We have a motion and a second to approve Johnson's request for chickens. Councilmember LeFevere?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Crum?
Er, I'm sorry, Johnson? State.
Councilmember Crum?
No.
And as Mayor Procham, I vote no as well, too. And the reason I vote no is because we need to put some structure around it in terms of what does that mean, is that unlimited, those sorts of things. So, the 2-2 vote, the approval was, we did not approve Johnson's request for chickens. Agenda Item 15, Mayor Procham's comments. I had, I have four things to comment on and to report. First, we've had a request from Vicki Schroeder to go into closed session. Can you get my notes out here? She would like to go into closed session under Article, or Iowa Code, Chapter 21. It's the article, it's 11, Procedure Closed Session, Section 8, Rounds Available Only to the Extent Necessary For Following Reasons, Item Number 9. To evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual's requesting a closed session. So, we had a chance to talk with our city attorney, and it took him a while to get back to us, but basically, what he said was, is that we did hire Vicki, she did work here for two days, we did pay her for that time, since then, we didn't pass the resolution to continue to pay her, but we never formally terminated her. And so, she is considered still an employee of the city, not working and not being paid. So, she has the right to request going into closed session. The other comment I would make would be, is that, so, I think we have two paths here. One is to grant her the closed session, which she would be included in, and have conversation with her about this. The second for us to think about, coming from Aaron as well, is that the council can go into closed session without Vicki to discuss matters where litigation is imminent with the council. Certainly, there is a liability to the city on what has happened here up to this point, and that's another option for us as well, too.
Based on Chapter 21 rules, we'd have to put that on the agenda to then be approved to go into closed session at a future meeting, special or regular, whatever it may be.
What Aaron, our city attorney recommended was, is that I could call a special meeting, so I will find a time and call a special meeting and do that the appropriate way, and then we can go ahead and go into closed session with a special meeting.
Do we need to publicly announce that date and time?
We would, we'd have to post it. We'd have to post it.
Would we need to add on it in this open meeting at this time, or at some open meeting, they would have to make that announcement, make that decision?
I could, as Mayor Procham, call a special meeting. We would have to post that, the normal posting requirements, which would be the agenda at closed session, the reasons why. So, what does the council wish to do?
I would say for granting her request. I think we need to hear from her, and we can go, we can always go into another closed session if we need to without her, but at this point in time, I say I'd like to hear from her. Does she have that right?
I agree.
Yep. I agree.
You agree as well?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and visit with Vicki and see some potential time, and call a special meeting and get that posted appropriately, so the public knows about it as well, too.